Okay, we're good? All right. We will call the November 6th, 2024 planning commission meeting to order. Charlie, please take your role.
Whitmire.
Here.
White. Moreland.
Aye.
Sherman.
Aye.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Are there any announcements other than my usual? We've got open positions all over the city of depot bay and there's a, I might have taken the last sheet, but um, there's a, usually a pile of them over there if anybody's interested. Are there any other announcements? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the September 11th, 2024 regular planning commission meeting minutes. Have you already had a chance to review those? The errors or omissions or corrections? I didn't see either. God, do you have any, can you note it? I'm going to have to look out. Charlie, I can't watch him approve. Oh, I mean, I didn't make the question.
Oh, sorry. You're entertaining.
Entertaining, they don't want you to go through. Well, unless there's any corrections, I think.
I'll move with approval.
Those things were made and seconded. Need for this discussion minutes? Okay, Carlyle, please take your role.
Whitmire. Moreland.
Aye.
Sherman.
Aye.
Okay, that approves of the minutes. Next item is the continuation of the case file number one dash SUV dash BC dash 24. Just a quick recap, as most of you probably all know, we've already completed the public test, or the public hearing portion. We've done a testimony in person here at the last meeting and the oh, what's the term for it? The there was a record, a request to leave the record open for additional written testimony, which was done and there was a number, a bunch of additional written testimony. And at that point, the public hearing is closed now, so we're going to go straight into commission deliberations. So just to bring everybody back up to speed. I think we did all get a chance to take a look at the, all the letters that came in on both, on both ends of it, so. I think we just pick up where we left off, which would be commission deliberations. Do I need to recap any of this? The public hearing's over.
We should, in one of the things, to just make sure we clarify the expertise and patients.
Yeah. Okay. So just for sake of completion here, we'll review the quasi judicial public hearing procedure. And the following statement will apply to all public hearings heard at tonight's meeting. The testimony and evidence must be directed toward the code section citations and criteria described by the depot bay staff report. Or other criteria in the code the party believes to apply to the subject request. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals on that issue. Application materials and other evidence relied upon by the applicant have been provided to the city and have been made available to the public. The procedures for the public hearing will be as follows, and again, this is mostly already complete. There will be a staff report. The applicant will present testimony. There will be testimony from those in favor of the application. There will be testimony from those in opposition to the application. There will be rebuttal from the applicant. And we'll then ask if there is anyone who requested the record remain open for additional, final additional written testimony. And if not, the public hearing will be closed. The commission will deliberate and make a decision. And during this time, there will be no further input from the public during deliberations. Are there any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias of commissioners regarding the hearing course? No. Got any ex parte contacts to declare?
No.
Okay. Is there any opposition to any member on the commission hearing this case by commissioners or the public? Okay. And in that case, I think that covers all our bases. And we'll go right into commission deliberations. Has everybody had a chance to review the additional testimony on both ends of it?
Yes, we've got some great additional testimony. Really, really.
Let me get the right page here. I'll start off with, yeah, there was, there was a lot of additional testimony that came in. And there's also a response to that from the applicant and, or a couple of response letters from the applicant. There were a lot of common themes I noted through the, through the various public testimony letters. Not the least of which, just in more particular order, there was a lot of discussion on the tree count. There was a lot of discussion on the road, you know, the street road conditions. And there was some discussion I saw on open space, you know, percentages and usages. And there was certainly other points as well. But when there's also some points made on the that's okay, little bit off. We've all been there. Anybody have any thoughts?
Trees, open space, tree, um the, the street, and traffic was an issue.
The what?
There was a common theme, a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
And the impact it would have on South 40. I mean, for all reasonable questions, concerns, the tree issue problem was complicated by the fact that there's been three owners since the tree study.
Yeah.
And somebody let that reset the count at some point, so.
That was, I was kind of, I noticed that too, and I was kind of, and that was brought up certainly in some of the letters. And I was kind of, you know, wondering about.
I'm not sure that we can consider that because it wasn't this owner.
Yeah.
But we can ask a deeper sort. Traffic. Hard to say. The, the issue that that was raised that I have some sentiment for, a lot of sentiment for, was the, the potential use of certain rentals. That is not the intended surface of this, though. The current units are allowed, but the rest of them won't be according to the developer. All we've got, now, we could probably, we might, I don't know if we can or not, put some restrictions on that. Zoning doesn't allow, so there's no, nothing that would give us any you know, and we basically call balls and strikes in our own rules.
I think there, I, I might just reiterate that, I think there, that got brought up at the last meeting, the short term rental issue. And my understanding from the applicant was that it isn't the plan isn't necessarily to just by default make them short term rentals, but there's nothing that would potentially preclude that from occurring.
If an owner bought a unit and wanted to make the short term rental, they would have their, and, and that's true to just about anything.
Yeah.
Unless there's covenants and restrictions that they sign into the HOA that prevent that. And that's the only way that that happens. Now, I have a question. Was there any mention of any kind of covenants or restrictions on the CCNRs? So, so so then if there's no HOA, we may need to come up with property. And that's probably a question for the, but that needs to be addressed. Because it looks like it, it was kind of property, means the HOA would have been there.
Yeah. And that, that is a condition of approval under streets.
Is that under streets?
It does say, the park areas and the drive aisles shall be maintained by, by the developer or homeowner association. So whether one right now is formed or not, it, it either will be or it will be the developer.
Well, it had to be, since we put this on the last meeting. Okay.
Yeah, okay, I see. Now, I, I think it's worth mentioning that this, this is, my understanding, this is a kind of a tentative preliminary approval application. With that being the case, there would be quite a bit more time for a lot of these other, you know, if approved, there would be a lot of time for additional backbiting and so forth to get done, because there's still a lot of, a lot of homework that needs to get done on the project in its entirety, it looks like.
Because near as I can tell, what we're approving or what we're considering is the layout of the lots and the boundaries. And that's pretty much it. Making sure there's enough lots for parking at. But, but the grading, the sewer connection, the water connection is all that. The deals will be handled when they go over building permit, which we'll get back here.
Yeah.
So every, every unit will have a separate hearing or group units. I wouldn't, well, we can talk about all that stuff, but I think right now, I don't know what, what are, what are options?
Um, I guess yeah, your options are to review, review the staff report, review the decision in front of you. Either approve it, prove it as suggested with the commission suggested by staff. Or if, if you were to deny it, I think your other option, you have to equip code based rationale for why, why that denial was justified.
So, in my mind, given that this is in light industrials on, the townhouses are outright used there, outright permitted use in that L I zone. The, with the merits of all the public testimony certainly being, certainly being a consideration factor, I don't see where we have any room to, I don't see them asking for any exemptions or variances or anything out of the in contrary to the city code.
Right.
So I would like to, I have a couple issues. They do need to comply with that. And that is the the tree. And maybe this is a question for the city planner. Just a summary of the tree requirements and the the original tree plating and then the change in ownership. And if what they currently have meets the tree numbers that the owners state. And then my other question is with the open space. It seems like that the document that came from the owner recently seems like it's a recalculation of the open space. And it's pretty close to what the minimum requirement is, the recalculation. And he states that DevCo engineering calculated that. And I don't remember seeing that in any DevCo.
I thought there was one, uh, first, um.
I know, but it's by, by.
They, DevCo over 23 testimony from Mr. Liza provides kind of a breakdown of that, of that calculation. Looks like this.
Yeah, I saw that, but isn't he one of the owners?
Yes, and that was provided because there was a question about that.
Okay, so he's, what he's saying is that he's cutting and basing from the DevCo document?
They, I believe they confirmed with that, what those areas were between the last hearing and the submission of this testimony to, to get those quantities to put that, put that here, so that question can be answered.
Okay, well, I still, I'm still a little confused about where the DevCo document is. Somebody said, is saying DevCo said it is. It's not what I wanted to hear.
DevCo is the applicant's engineering, comparing their plans. And, and those, those areas weren't calculated on the plan. And if I remember correctly, there was, there was a request to show that math, I guess, how they, how they came to that 35%. And so this is just, this is just a calculation provided by applicant engineer with regard to the areas that were shown on the plans that are in public record. So no, no change has occurred to those plans that.
That DevCo one, I think, if I remember correctly, it was, it is included as an enclosure in the staff report that, but I, I think that might have been the one that there was a, a missing page or a missing.
Well, it was actually a half a line. It wasn't that much, but
Yeah.
It did not cover that, but no, the calculations were not in that original report. So they went back and redid it and then were being presented with that.
So, go ahead.
So we have somewhere DevCo's statement of this open space and not just what the owner just said DevCo has said.
Well, I don't, I don't believe that DevCo has submitted a separate memo or anything attesting to that. I think we, we understand that this is basically DevCo's transcription of those areas. Just as, as represented by the applicant themselves. So if you, so if you were to, again, this is, because this is a tentative plan, when this comes back for final plan review and kind of the, the engineering phase of the project, those are things we will review to confirm those areas remain, remain correct.
Yeah, those calculations, we have to do on every building. Just to make, this, this calculation will be done for every building.
Okay.
Just to make sure it stays at what was required, because you could have subtle changes in scope. And property lines get moved and all of a sudden it doesn't, doesn't mean anything. So we're going to have to have that. That's going to be a condition for every building.
Okay, so we're going to re audit this.
It, yeah, it has to be.
That, that, that's true. That's a good point. So part of the, part of the reason why there are two steps is, is once we get into the final engineering, things will shift. But because we have these conditions, we will go back to make sure that even when things change, these certain standards are being here too, as well as all the other requiring standards, but that's kind of how that process works. You also have a question about the trees.
About the trees, and it seems we all, including the, the president.
Sure.
Have some confusion about the trees.
Yes, it's a good question, thank.
I'm also curious about what triggers the tree count. Is it every time a change in ownership or whatever? That is, that comes, that one comes up fairly frequently in our, in, in our planning commission meetings is tree counts. And it would be good to get that dotted in for future.
Yeah, so, good question. It's kind of interesting, especially because there is a prior rule that allows them to remove trees, which they had started to execute on. And they, they talked about that in Mr. Fludmell's testimony. I think it's the first page of the testimony toward the law. In Oregon, you are subject of a property owner and an applicant, an applicant for land use application is subject to the rules in place when that application is submitted. And based on kind of the conditions in place at the smell of that application. So this, this, this is a, a little bit unique situation. We have, had approval to remove trees. They started to execute on that, and then they submitted a new application that also requested removal of some trees. And so technically the, the true, the correct baseline for this current application is the trees that existed on the date that this application was submitted.
They do have a.
Correct.
Which would make the tree count less than
Correct.
Required, less than when it's original.
Correct, yeah. The, the the applicant does know in their testimony here that and I won't add too much color to this, but just to point out that it's, it's at the bottom section of Mr. Fludmell's testimony on the day of the application, there were 120 trees, which are required, is, deserve 24 that we plan on retaining the originally required 400 trees.
I have an unrelated question. What is up with the TV?
That is a, somebody who wishes to not be seen.
Okay, that's somebody watching the proceeding, but got it. Understood.
Okay, sorry, I just totally derailed.
Yeah, so I, I see, I see that one up there. That, and it does mention the original approximate 204-ish trees, at least six inches in diameter at four feet from ground. 20% of that would be required to retain at least 41 trees that your original application. New application would be 20% of what remained. Which lowers the requirement to 24 trees, but they do want to decide that they do plan to retain the originally required number of 41 trees. Okay. There's definitely a lot of questions that if you care about a lot of homework that still needs to get done on that project, but I'm not seeing anything in our zoning or ordinances or code that would preclude approval in that, for that use, for that preliminary kind of approval.
Yeah, I don't know. No, there's nothing, there's nothing to comment for that.
Any thoughts?
So I, I appreciate the input from the community, some really great concerns. And unfortunately, we are mandated, although, I won't say unfortunately, that doesn't sound right, does it? Fortunately, we are mandated to follow the ordinances.
Yeah.
And Mr. Howell and his crew are, as far as I can tell, that are meeting those requirements.
There were some concerns raised about aesthetics and those need to be addressed.
Yeah.
And I was a little confused about one point. I don't think it's, about the issue of the half road. They're only going to do half the road.
A south 40. South 40 modification only, only modifying adding the north half.
The north half, okay, okay.
I think it's an addition to what's there now.
Yeah, and it would be to the, as far as, you can tell basically to the end of the, as far as south 40 is the property needs to extend shortly.
Then the other side of the road would be upgraded to point that somebody else possibly wanted to develop that, that property.
Well, at the other side of the road, if someone built a property across the street, then yeah, maybe, but right on the other side. I mean, one of the reasons they had to widen the roads is the fire truck side of the, or block.
Yeah, and on, on that note, it did like, there were a number of comments I'll, I'll note about things like city infrastructure, fire service and all that stuff. And as with all of our development that goes on, that, you know, they do have to get in touch with the public works and talk to Brady to get all that sorted out. And I didn't see any issues that the public works department or the fire department came up with at this time for preliminary.
Well, and the GP went ahead and has the order of protection with the 24 feet.
Okay. Any other comments that you want to make out?
Well, I guess I would make a comment that probably would be appreciated, that I wonder if it's possible that this development could increase property value. That piece on south 40.
I don't know.
I don't either.
I'm not a real.
It depends on the aesthetics of the buildings. There are three fairly large custom homes in that lot, so that could certainly, the, the last, the lots, the new lots, 2023, 24 are custom two story, three bedroomed homes.
Yeah, it would definitely be a big change down there.
Probably a nice view of the harbor.
Okay.
I'd advise that this whole life would be the core of the commission.
Yeah. Okay, any other considerations or comments the, among commissioners?
I think we, I think we have all the data we need that we, we really have to.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion?
I'll approve this application. Preliminary approval.
Thank you. I'll, I'll second that. I was going to note the preliminary approval. This will, you know, this project in its various phases would, would come back to us if we approve it, so.
Yeah, I second that. Any further discussion? All right, Carlyle, please take your role.
Moreland.
Aye.
Sherman.
Aye.
Whitmire.
Aye.
I should have asked.
Thank you. Okay. That finishes up that particular thing. I imagine we'll probably see a lot of new folks for future ones. Moving on, do we have any unfinished business?
Not likely.
Here. Done? Is there any good business? Wait a moment here.
Yeah.
Do you have a public comment you'd like to make? Because.
On the old one? Oh, what you guys were just talking about?
Public hearing is closed on that one.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I don't want to comment on that. I don't know nothing about what we talked about.
Okay, so. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Do we have any new business? Okay, now it's public comments time. If you'd like to speak, please step up and you can say anything.
Sir, you'll have to come up and sign it, please.
Well, okay, I guess I'm a little bit lost here. Excuse me.
No problem. Just introduce yourself and if you wouldn't mind writing down your name and address as a title.
I'm Kyle Luther. I did some design draft work for Alan Fleming. He owns a house on William Street. And I thought we were he wants that reconstruct the deck.
Oh, okay. That sounds like a, you might need to get in touch with the staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought.
Yeah, I've got, I've got that one currently.
So we weren't on today's?
No, you're not on tonight's agenda. That's correct. That, that'll be at the December meeting.
That we're told we're in the November.
No. No, if you would like to hang out and chat about it after the German here, more than happy to.
Okay.
Which probably won't be too long from now.
Yeah. Probably not.
So I guess I don't need to sign anything with that. Well, please, if, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Since, since you spoke, even if you didn't.
Okay, just for, for, I don't want the urban government ethics commission reading down on that exposure.
Although we'll, I know what else to go.
Name and, and city and state, when a major tax fraud occurs.
Luckily, I've got a better voice than the recording.
Okay, sounds like the city planner will be happy to talk to you as soon as we're done.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other public comments? Nope. Anybody on, nobody online I don't think can talk, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any city council DA's other reports? I have not attended any meetings. I was teaching Brandon's class on city council next year.
I will be at the next meeting, city council meeting as a citizen. And so I probably won't be in the planning commission now.
Okay.
That'll be.
You take notes.
All right. If the mayor recognizes you as a kind of a commission representative, we'll give you that.
If, if you would prefer not to, I will ask her not to grab you off from the audience. I, I think it would feel conflicted to me if I either ask or not to see you go.
Okay, uh, we'll go on to the next item, which is city planner and city administrator slash reporter reports. Are there any reports to be had?
Landen has a report. There's a Landen. What's your report, Landen?
Oh, yeah.
Told him I was going to do this and say that. Have you offered Landen's last day of 30?
What?
I agree, yeah, I agree. I had an opportunity for the city planner, for the city of Winston and some family down in Roseburg. Um, and me and my wife are confident that, uh, at this time is the right moment for our making. Uh, so I'm gonna bring all the food I can to try to soften the blow and my wife makes sourdough, I'll bring some of that and maybe a tri-tip or two, I don't know, if they.
Try to ease our minds.
They eat well around here, so it's gonna be hard to.
Next meeting, we'll have some of that.
Oh, at the next meeting, if, if I can get the staff.
You and I, you and I can connect.
Might get the staff, not to you.
Right.
I mean, you can talk about sour or cracker, you know, and then you can leap before the next meeting, so.
Yeah.
I think that happens.
So if at any time, Ja, Zach will continue supporting the city as he has done, helped us with, and, um, Tarko ended up in Jerry, Jerry today, so she'll post positions tomorrow, but things are getting out, so, um, we'll be posting for, I must be right.
No, a short time, but a good time, thank you. It was, yeah, I'm happy that it's harbor lights with my baby, you know. Yeah.
He will be best, even though he's been here a short time, because he was a good fit.
Yep, agreed. That was born in Roseburg, it'll be, it's, it's nice down there, yeah.
Yeah. Gets a little warm piece.
What's that?
Says it's warm.
Okay, any other city staff reports?
The only thing I have, and I didn't want to necessarily want to go over this with you tonight, unless you guys want, we can save our primitive discussion. But I just gave you everything that I gave to the city council regarding the change to the public meetings law rules and the training that all county, all voting bodies, not just the council, but all committees and commissions will have to, to go through. Um, and just making sure that you guys are cognizant of, particularly the highlighted areas, which shows that you can be held personally liable, um, so make sure that you are, uh, do whatever you can to, you know, stay within the public meetings laws, and that's what we're here to help you with, with doing. So if you have any questions, let us know. Um, I am trying to get a massive training, if you will, where it's in person, we'll have the ethics commission come in. Um, we might be sharing some of that time with Toledo and other cities, but it's a good way to get the in-person training. You can at any point sign up for the Zoom training, I already did it once, I will probably do it again, um, because there's a lot of disinformation on there. But I encourage you to take any of those trainings, we really have to feel confident when, when you're drawn. But unless you want to go over it some, now or some later dates, it's more to give you a heads up and we'll, we'll start getting on and saying, you guys need to.
Uh, two questions, sorry, Ruth, um, two questions, what's the deadline to get that training under your belt? And it looked like it was like once a year or something, you have to.
Once a year.
Okay.
Same to me if you're on multiple boards, so you only have to do it once or one, you don't have to do it for each one. So that's good for some folks, but you have to do it once a year. And they were talking about the deadline being January, but at the meeting I attended the other day, they're, they're flexible about it because they can get the training done until recently.
Okay.
So, um, so you're fine, I would say if you can't get it done and passes are filling up, so if you can't get it done by the engineer, please, please try to keep an eye on the link where they give the link where the schedule is and try to be on something in January or February.
And it's just basically to go and sign up for one of these on that link that you sent out?
Yeah, very easy, yeah. So, and I gave you the, this I gave to the council, this, which was the last time I was to the dates, I'm sure they have, some of them are.
Can they even have Zoom on them? Do these, do you see that Zoom on them? Does this have Zoom on it?
Yes. As, as can, Zoom is, just click in the link, you know, on that, but it has.
Well.
Are you saying it's not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a, a kind of city function on my laptop at home, but on Zoom, yeah, does this thing have Zoom on it?
Probably not, there's not the Zoom app, which I use all the time.
Well, yeah, you might have to download the app, but usually you just go to website and it just says you want to go to the app.
The weather's in this one.
Okay.
So.
So, we'll just.
If you have problems, let me know. Um, I mean, it's, it could be even such a thing as if we couldn't get an in-person training as soon as we want, we could also all meet here and do something Zoom through there, so.
So you sent us a document, that was your thing?
It was the, it's the second packet, it was, um.
It's titled memo.
I, I uploaded it last night to, to the meeting packet, it'll say, uh, memo, public meeting law or something like that.
Yeah, there's only one, there's only one, okay.
I'll find it.
Maybe if we all try to get that done before the year's over or something, we should be in good shape.
Is this routine, is this routine training or is this in response to something that we've done or not?
Oh, it's not.
State law.
Okay, no, no, that's Oregon, Oregon government ethics commission came down with new rules, and I think because there hasn't really been no true oversight of public meeting law, I mean, the attorney general, but now they've decided legislative want the ethics commission to handle public meetings law, like they're already handling these executive session, executive session, complex interest. They said, okay, there's enough issues, and I follow it, there are a lot of issues with boards and guy commissions with, um, following public meetings laws, but it's not us. So the question is, we're not the rebels, so, but they just made it a state law.
Okay.
Is the annual rate our sensitive training?
Okay, any other staff reports? Anything that's unliked it? Moving on to planning commission concerns, anybody like to start?
I don't have any.
Well, I, I probably, well, concerned, but, I mean, Zach's gonna, you're gonna stay with us and support us and you'll be here. And if we want to have a question or issue, somehow we'll get routed to Zach.
We email Carla and she gets it out to me.
Lets it out, she'll take care of you.
It's on my list, so.
I know.
And Ruth also, uh, what I'm focusing on, uh, you know, well, no longer here is essentially organizing as much as I can my current file load to set up the December meeting for success, and that touches a little bit on miscellaneous requests, um, as far as staff reports, getting out, um, mailing notices, neighbor notices, uh, and just doing what I can to, as far as applications, you know, obviously, the after I leave, the new application, and it's no longer me, but the staff that I do give in trying to just organize it and get it as far down the road as possible. Very good. Um, anything else? Okay, I don't have anything to add. I think that's, that's it, the present meeting being included, declare ourselves in here.